Before I start, I'd like everyone at home and everyone here at City Council to recognize the true American patriot and hero. His name is Carlos Villanueva. I'd like to pass around a donation canister for this brave person. He has bills to pay and a family to support also. I'd like to pass it around to the City Council and all the people behind this wall. Thank you very much.
You can allow the co-incidence.
Thank you. It's not right to steal taxpayer money. What it is is crooked, corrupt, corporate-owned judicial system, city councils, and pseudo courts that do so. We can't continue with the fear tactics, but I'm on your game. Channel 4 and Channel 7 should be ashamed of the yellow journalism as our stations continue to demonize and destroy the families and family members who have been assassinated by APD. We all know who "for" stands for and the advertising dollar. Same for Channel 7. It's a situation worth covering up on Channel 7 to tell you what you want to know. As the winds of change blow through this chamber, I hope the air wakes people up. You don't have to play "Follow the Leader" as most do. Trust yourself, believe in yourself. American patriots do. Where's the mayor? Where's the police chief? How about DOJ, FBI, and Homeland? All got invited to the meetings. They continue to hide. They never show up. They need to arrest people here for people are committing misprision and treason. Keep hiding. The people need to clean the house if our US government can. Time to come out of the closet, law enforcement. Give information on who, on how to donate to Carlos will be sharpened.
How about a call away next person because we have people up here who are coming out of the office. Marlon Serrano, Rocky Deterres, Darlene Martinez, Thomas Rover, Deborah Nolan, Casey Padilla, Connie Deere, Gino Saviel, and Steve Regal. Of the straight.
Nutritionist Roger Williams proved that not enough nutrients causes alcoholism. In experiments with rats, only 10% of those with full nutrition became alcoholic. When nutrients were cut by one-third, about 33% became alcoholic. When nutrients were tripled for supernutrition, only 1% became alcoholic. In a study on people who smoked and booze, when they received supernutrition, an amazing 80% stopped smoking and boozing without even trying. Dr. John Douglas found that booze and cigarette addictions went away when those patients ate only raw foods. No willpower needed. Raw foods tower body what is good for it and what is bad for our health. Dr. Joseph Beasley started a clinic for alcoholics in New York with the highest success rate in the nation. Years earlier, he was severely alcoholic. The foundation of his own recovery and his treatment program was good nutrition. Read his book, How to Defeat Alcoholism. I treasure health. I eat no crack. I eat no cooked food. I drink no booze. I smoke no cigarettes. I take no prescription drugs, no illegal drugs. I treasure health.
Thank you. Rocky Deterres, Darlene Martinez, Thomas Rover, and Deborah Nolan. Again, I would ask that all the members here please be seated. You're obstructing the usual manners. If they speak with life, please be gentle with speech. We ask that you stand.
Thank you very much. Senator Roger Williams, I ask that you represent those City of Albuquerque employees affected by what we believe is the wrongdoing of the mayor and he imposed negative and basically stripped these employees of their rights Friday afternoon when he imposed the contracts. We are here today upset, but respectfully before this body to ask you to stop the bleeding. As negotiator for these contracts, negotiations reached in passing in 2010, the city has refused to go to arbitration, which would have ensured that these employees received their raises year after year. In May this year, at the Direction of City Council Guardians Committee, Cao Robert Perry stated that the city would consider arbitration to resolve the contract dispute and set up a meeting with the HR Director, Mr. Vincent Yermol. At the meeting, Mr. Yermol made two significant statements, both of which have been contradicted by the city's actions on Friday. Number one, Mr. Yermol said in the meeting, any settlement to go to arbitration that involves money is a deal breaker. And so the city proposed a settlement discussion, not only not to include the 1% appropriated for each of the three years, but it also did not include the current city council's appropriated 3%. His second statement, he stated, "The city would rather entertain the language for impasse arbitration in the contract rather than change the ordinance." We took the city at their word, wrote the language up, and passed the language back across the city during negotiations. Now, the city says in its letter to the locals on Friday, taking the position that that action is unacceptable. They're contradicting themselves and prolonging the issues. This administration cares less about its employees. It's all about the mayor's image. As a former city employee, I understand the hard work these employees perform day in and day out.
Thanks. Counselor Lewis.
Please thank you, Mr. President. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something about arbitration.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
In the ordinance right now, the process is once the parties reach impasse negotiations, both parties cannot move any further. You've given your last best. There is a process within the Labor Management Relations Ordinance that the parties would need a mediation, and after that, it would give the parties an option to go to arbitration. Right now, that option is voluntary for the parties. So at this time, whenever you're at impasse, it's basically a stalemate. If either party doesn't want to go to arbitration, the city for four years has refused to go. If the city would agree, let's just resolve this dispute in arbitration. It would resolve the issues. An arbitrator would either pick the union's last best or the city's last best. It's a toss-up for both parties, and it would resolve the issue. And let me say, for the last four years, both sides have always come to agreement on their wages. That has never been in dispute. We've had disputes of language, but that we believe that each party would have an opportunity to make a presentation before an arbitration, allowing them to know why the certain proposal should be changed, and if they convince the arbitrator, then it would happen.
And, Mr. President, so arbitration is not the same as imposition?
Meaning by imposition, sir?
Imposing last best by any one of the parties.
No, sir. They are distinctly different.
So you, as one of the negotiators of the sides, couldn't impose your last best?
We would never have that opportunity, nor would we have the authority.
And would the other side have that authority?
Apparently, they believe so, and they did on Friday.
So it's not settled?
It is far from settled. We will be entering back into litigation this week, spending taxpayers' money, if you will, trying to resolve this issue where we started in 2010. A court date started in 2010, went all the way into the Supreme Court, barely ended last year in October. Now, we're going to enter litigation again.
And, Mr. President, aren't you afraid that the city will sue you?
No. Because we believe we would be successful in this particular case, and we will defend the rights of these employees.
Thank you. There are several people, scientists, here to dismiss. Thank you. Darlene Martinez, Thomas Rover, Deborah Nolan.
Good evening, President Sanchez, Council. I'm here. My name is Darlene Martinez. I'm a city security officer. I am a great year at Asom West, and I'm also Secretary Treasurer for Local 888. I'm here to talk about the slap in the face that we received on Friday. Our union time is taken away from us, and our workplace rights are taken away from us. Like I said before, not only are we going to be, we're going to not be city employees anymore, we're going to just be considered wet shot employees, not city employees. After 16 years of being with the city, 10 years with city security, and six years with the Department of Corrections, BCDC, Westside Joe, I am still at only $12.79 an hour. I'm earning about $13 an hour. This is going to force me to leave the city. I have considered leaving the city to pursue my education full-time in order to get a degree. Because according to one of Mayor Barry's right-hand men, if you pursue an education to get a degree, you're entitled to a 33% raise. So, in order for me to pursue my studies, I'm willing to quit my job and be forced to go on public assistance. So the taxpayers think that paying $116 now, $116 a week for eight hours of union time to my union president for 115 union members was a lot. Wait till they have to pay for my food, my clothing, my housing, my medical, possibly my education. And when I come back to the city, I hope I can get that 33% raise that would be due to me for getting an education. Shame on this administration for choosing greed over integrity and honesty. And I want to thank all you councils for having a heart and integrity to listen to us and act on what our issues are about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thomas Rover, Deborah Nolan, Casey Padilla.
City Council President, Nancy Sanchez, City Council members. Actually, it's Romero, just for the record. That's okay. Yeah. So, I'd just like to reiterate what my colleague said, our spokesperson, Rocky Deterres, you know, with the news on Friday. You know, at first, when the news came out on the media, it sounded good, 3%, the mayor's going to go and give the 3%, and no strings attached. But then I get an email from Vincent Yermol, the HR Director, stating that, you know, that they're going to impose this contract on us, that their last best offer, which I think I found like 14 changes in the articles of the contract, you know, any of our union calendar, to due process, to getting for vacation time, bounty rights, a whole list of articles on that contract, and all were asking for our proposals pretty reasonable. And Mr. Yermol stated that we were asking for too much, because we're asking for step increases. And I don't think the taxpayers in this city council made other employees from other bargaining that Local 1888 contracts, we have steps. And I got like, you know, I have people stuck in steps for like, step two, which is like the lowest after probation, you go to step two, which is $12.42 an hour. I have guys up in vehicles in our department, in our bargaining unit, that make $12.42. They've been there in the city for more than 15 years. Many opposing, we just, people want to prepare a contract. We want to do a multi-two-year contract that, you know, maybe we can, for next year, you know, take 3% now, we can allocate these steps maybe for next year. And that's what I've been pushing for a long, and I've just been proactive on keeping our union time intact. And I just hate for administration keep using the union time against us, and they want to take, not just union time, they want to add to the, add to the union time, or taking or pulling out of our contract. Thank you.
I have one question for you, Mr. Romero. You stated to this council that basically people have been there for 14 years working security, and it looks like Mr. Martinez also reiterated that are still making $12.42 an hour working security?
Yes, Council, Sanchez, President Sanchez, that's true. And we just had a couple of people retired, not even top out. They were step four, which is I think $15.42. Our top out paid is $16.03. And we have a small, maybe like 18 people on that last step. The whole bargaining out of 115 people was like, like 18 people topped out paid. The one lesser than step, step five, is like seven people at $15.42, 10 people at $14.81, which is a step line end. And then we're inflated the bottom step, 12 people at $12.42, probably about maybe 50% of the bargaining is up in that step. So I didn't think it was unfair that the step increase package going by the longevity of each step, that people get a chance to move, so they, when they retire, I guess they can top out with the city's last proposal. I mean, there's, there's never no chance of talking out. I mean, there's no such thing. I mean, once you're, okay, that's $12.42 step, when do you go up? That's, that's, that was already been.
Well, thank you for your time.
And we also want arbitration. We really appreciate arbitration being part of the guidelines to get that passed. I really appreciate it. City Council.
Hold on, Counselor. Many has a question for you. Mr. Romero.
Just a quick question, Mr. Romero. How much do you say you make an hour?
$14.81, and I've been in the city 18, going on 18 years.
Long time. Can I ask you, how many children you have?
I have two daughters.
So that's like an annual salary of what?
I think around $30,000 without any type of overtime.
And are you the primary breadwinner? I'm sorry for asking you on this first one question.
Yes, 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 Counsel. And my mom, I mean, my wife is a stay-home mother. She does homeschooling also.
So would you say that with an annual salary of like $30,000, would you be able to provide for any services? I need to ask that question.
City Council, yes, that is true.
That's really impressive.
Thank you. Deborah Nolan, Casey Padilla, Connie Deere, Gino Saviel, and Steve Regal.
President, my name is Deborah Nolan. I'm the president of the Department of City of Albuquerque. I would like to give credit where credit is due, that is to you, City Council, for giving us that 3% raise. Thank you very, very much, and I really appreciate it. Mayor Barry, this administration wants to take credit for that 3% that he didn't recommend. He reluctantly proposed a 1%, but it was you that appropriated 3%. In 2010, the city imposed wage test, we met to him, test on non-economic language. Every negotiation after that, it was only to do with appropriations. Why they didn't, the city appreciate their employees and give them 1%? There was no reason why they didn't. City employees deserve this long overdue raise. The raise that the unions have fought for has secured with City Council. The Barry administration approved a 1% increase for F15 that they never intended to implement unless employees gave up their critical rights. And this is exactly what we stand today, and it's wrong. Mayor Barry and this administration is turning back all productive and positive language that has been negotiated for decades between labor and management. The only fix for this is finding contact and representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Casey Padilla, Connie Deere.
Thank you, Ms. Romero.
I will take a recess, so please, attempt cooperation and respect for one another. Counselor Garde.
These questions are directed at someone involved in the group, Mr. Perry, I would. Mr. Blunders.
And Mr. President, just to the record, let me perfect the record, and then that's Counselor Guardunio.
Counselor Garde, you have a floor that you can...
I want to voice my...
That's definitely fine. Counselor Garde, you have a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Blunders, not to get into this sort of, I don't know what these days, tit-for-tat and all that other stuff. I'm asking a simple question. Why is it that the administration slash mayor slash elected official is able to enter into those kinds of negotiations if they're not? And I know I'm going to get the answer that, you know, the administration, and they have the right to negotiate, but they don't have the right to impose.
Mr. Perry, I would ask you, do you know, to answer your first part of your question, I don't have information, you know, mileage, that the director was directly with the mayor or the office. I don't have information. I did read the letter, it was signed by Mr. Perry, and Mr. Perry does have that authority. But it doesn't change the fact that the council is limited by the ordinance, and it also doesn't change the fact that the ordinance does contain procedures for negotiation and impasse resolution and arbitration. It doesn't mean that that's occurred here, but as I said earlier, I think as one of the union officials mentioned, they may disagree with that. I do believe, based on the ordinance, there would be the appropriate bodies to pursue that.
And let me just finish by saying, who made the announcement on the imposition?
You know. Mr. President, I would ask you, do you know, I received it by email, probably around the same time that you did, and I read the letter, it was signed by the Cao, so that's the question.
I thought I had caught a glimpse of the mayor making the announcement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Garde.
Mr. President, in this room, there was an action by, I assume, this is also a, you know, I guess you've corroborated him in action, the council would need to mandate contract arbitration. He would obviously apply to the council against something like that. Who's authority against what that fall under, what state law?
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, so the council, in some way, years, years back, passed the liberalized regulation ordinance, and it guides this whole process. When it discusses the point of arbitration, is it's not appropriate, basically, to take to this point of impasse, after which time you go through mediation, and then there's an opportunity for voluntary arbitration. That's another liberalization ordinance. And I think the way to change that is to exercise the council's policy discretion to change the ordinance, and in which case you can mandate what type of arbitration procedure you want. Now, it's easy for me to say that there are significations within many of the ordinance that we necessarily need to discuss or adapt, and we're not here about all the time is that the city's ordinance is the credible grandfather in respect for the state labor regulations. And the state labor regulations, I think, do have mandatory arbitration procedures, but any amendments we do to our ordinance will bring high implications of using the city's grandfather to ask the question of the council, from a policy perspective, that's appropriate or not.
Mr. President, so it's in conflict right now, say, with the state and the city ordinance, in conflict, and so an action by the council to change that ordinance here would affect...
Mr. President, Counselor Lewis, that is correct. We have to restore whatever changes were made as well, because if the city loses its grandfather status, not only change that particular provision, but it would involve the other provisions of the state law.
Counselor Garde.
That was actually my question, Mr. Perry, about changing ordinance at some point. So, thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, Mr. Garde. Gino Saviel, Steve Regal, Danny Martano, Chris Lloyd.
President Sanchez, Counselor's name is Regal. Let's speak on how the motions have been affected by this imposition of the jurisdiction. The most shocking was that Mayor Barry and Robert Perry were both on this, and it makes the sentence appear as essential for state workers dedicated in light of the service to help. This bank is frozen to question any incentive to strive for best performance, good attendance, qualifications, fitness, before burying the true good progress of family to put trust in the city with the power to get cases experienced when they could be barred by advancement. The administration has substituted distrust of the system of nepotism, cronyism, and the good boy network of giving the A to value, and more and more, see if that's demonstrated on the evening news. Before we could, when the circulars put out for employment, they would go up to state boys first. And then now, this language, it tends to put that they're going to put out to state mighters. And it's going to be the best. Because they can bring in anyone they want from the outside, and the state workers with years' experience, knowing the signals and reds, knowing how the union works, and how the extraction works, that's going to be the law of the world. So please, please, we need binding arbitration. I couldn't ask for more than to grant this binding arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Wilson, Frank Cortez, Thomas Rattler, Steve Regal, Oscar Simpson, and then our ten more. Welcome.
President Sanchez of City Council. I'm showing this article by Stephen Helvisson, posted on Albuquerque Business First website because it's time for a discussion about truth, honesty, and our own self-image versus how the world sees us, as he discusses. This article and the other two he references...
Vander, the mic from a little closer to you.
This article and the other two he references, we are in Albuquerque and New Mexico's population averaging a worth of reading. You can get these articles for free with no questions asked and sign up at visitjournalist.com for the free daily emails of articles which I have found educational and timely spent. Kudos to Police Chief Gordon Neen for speaking about one of the elephants in the room. I am appreciative that he showed his leadership by speaking the truth. I offer a suggestion, help out a joint press conference with Police Chief Gordon Neen and Stephanie Lopez, President of the Police Union, presenting their plan on how they are going to join the group that cops and what their timeline is for that to be completed. Let's be innovative on solving our problems and think outside the box. It's time we unite for truth and open this transparency and effective leadership that's shown by their actions, that the citizens are their priorities rather than pitting government against unions, Democrats against Republicans, and all the other divisions that are happening in Albuquerque and New Mexico with special interests trying to sabotage effective solutions. The enemy is within, and we are in an imploding quack-mire. We need to come together. If we don't, we will no longer be the land of enchantment, we will be the land of quicksand. We are slowly sinking. We want our children and grandchildren to grow up in a healthy society where people are honest and have integrity, display impeccable social skills, and have effective leaders who can be grown up, for them to emulate. Let's stay focused on and unite for an ethical, effective, and efficient government and a healthy, productive society. Come together, please.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Frank Cortez, Steve Regal, Oscar Simpson, Barbara Nolan. Welcome.
Mr. Frank Cortez, I support what Diane Green said, but none of the things that this is. I'm already tired from the City of Albuquerque, been with the union and everything else. You know what? I've never seen contracts negotiated in the news media. But that's what we're going to be negotiating, and it's not fair to these employees. These employees, you know, they got 3%, been very lost too. But we can give $33,000 raises, ribbons, and you know what? What is this time come? You know, we're last in everything. These four employees behind me are last. They shouldn't have to, a union won't have to come over here and try to solicit more money out of the administration. This administration is a disgrace.
Thomas Radcliffe, Steve Grayl, Oscar Simpson.
Counsel President Sanchez, esteemed councilors. My name is Tomas Radcliffe. Today I urge you to support President Sanchez's resolution to observe and protect the wild integrity of the river Grande Bosque. For five years, my family and I lived without a car, and during this time, we didn't make enough money to go on vacation, to proceed wilderness areas. However, during this time, I never felt as though we didn't hide our young daughter the opportunity to, the formative opportunity to experience nature and wilderness. That's because most every day, we found a way to get to the Bosque. And once there, and you can tell the traffic from the overpass dissipated, you couldn't hear it anymore, and the trail started to become overgrown, and the animals became more prevalent and bolder. And that moment, I felt within me something uplift, and every time I go there, I feel the same thing, something within me serves, and I feel wilder, and at the same time, more human. When I go to city parks or open spaces, or when I go to the bio park or the botanical garden, I don't have that city feeling. When I go to the bio park or the botanical gardens, all the animals and plants are neatly arranged, and there's ample signage to tell you what you're supposed to experience and know about the animals and plants. If we add more signs, and more crusher finding, if we add more bridges, if we add more gazebos for Bosque, it will become more of a human space. And people like myself and my family, who use the Bosque as our primary, if not exclusive portal, to some approximation of wilderness, will feel less whole, will not feel as wild, and certainly will not feel as human. So I ask you to continue to do everything you can to protect and preserve our Bosque. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Grayl, Oscar Simpson, Arten Walker, Virginia Bruce, and Steve Paul. Welcome.
President, Councilor, my name is Steve Grayl. I'm retired from the city of Albuquerque, but twenty-five years in service, and I was also an ex-president of sixty-four. What I'm here to tell you is probably what you already know, Mayor Berry, and Mr. Perry, our thieves. They stole our promotion rights, the thing that every worker should show their tour in the United States as a part. To wanna be able to advance, make their families more comfortable, and give them a quality of life. What they did would be the same thing as if they walked in your backyard and drove off in your cars, you're coming out to stop them, they throw a hundred dollar bill in your face, and they say, "We just bought your car." And the first question that's gonna come out of your mouth is, "Well, it wasn't for sale." And that's the point. Our promotion process, our career ladder, was never for sale, and that's what they did today. And let me just tell you something, I appreciate the voting on confidence that you put, but not only did he send you a message, he sent the workers behind me a message. He says, "If you have nerve to do this, I will show you what I'll do. I'll craft a contract down your throat, and then you can go to court and try to unravel the mess." And that's what he did. And let me tell you, as a young man, my father always told me, "If you see somebody getting logged and beat up, and you don't pick up the phone, and you don't interview, then you're no better than the person that beat him up and reached in their pocket and took the money." It is time for this city council to change that ordinance, because if you mirror the ordinance of the state four years ago, we wouldn't be here today. And that is the solution that you're looking for, Mr. Perry. You need to change the ordinance.
Thank you. Arten Walker, Arten Walker. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the, uh, Council First. My name is Oscar Simpson. I'm here to ask for your support tonight for resolution R thirteen-two-four. This resolution, taking several months to develop, is primarily to make sure that the city's integrity and wildlife and people's integrity of the Bosque. I'm here since nineteen fifty-two, I've seen lots of changes, especially in the Bosque. One more development, and more resource demands are gonna significantly impact it if we don't make sure that we follow the standards of science. This resolution follows, outlines the integrity of science and studies, and we've got the open space of what should be, of what should be done. I ask you and I to make sure that you pass reservation on this, the last nine forty, but the meeting are thirteen-two-four.
Thank you. Arten Walker, Virginia Bruce, Steve Paul, Sylvia Galileo, and Melissa Tapi Garcia. Welcome, Arten Walker.
Hi, Counsel Sanchez, Counsel President Sanchez. Uh, first of all, you, you know, that I criticize previous administrations, or you have this administration, I criticize the administration, I criticize the city council actions, I'm crazy. My heart's in the right place, and I want, I want to, to criticize. I have never seen anything like this administration, the Mayor Berry administration. I wanna start off by apologizing, because four years ago, I was down in here, and I believe I was hoodwinked. I thought it was shared sacrifice in twenty-ten for the city workers with no layoffs to take it, or, or take reduction in costs. But I was bamboozled. This administration is unethical. I've spoken with previous chief administrative officers personally, I can't even speak with Rob Perry, except for the one time, two and a half years ago, when he spoke with me. So, let's see, what has this administration done? Albuquerque is in a double-digit recession. The Mayor Berry administration has failed, to large degree, with the fundamental economy. The Mayor Berry administration, with Rob Perry, the silver-tub devil, tried to turn the public against the union workers. I see the bus drivers out there working very hard every day, and doing a good job, and that's just what they're doing. I also believe that the Mayor Berry administration, and maybe some other people, have tried to turn the public against the Albuquerque Police Department. It's a leadership problem, it's a lack of ethics, and a lack of integrity, and dishonorable... I don't even know it, please. Thank you for your time.
Virginia Bruce, Steve Paul, Sylvia Galileo, Melissa Tapi Garcia, and Dick Fisher. Welcome, Galileo.
Counsel President Sanchez, members, uh, this flag's not a sign, and it's not a banner. If you serve in a notary, you'd know that it's something you expect, that passes in this, in this chamber. You know, I listen to the union folks, you know, that one made thirty thousand a year. Curry made thirty, a thirty thousand dollar raise. Isn't that ludicrous? Now, this is the most corrupt administration and most dangerous police force in history of the city. Let me say that again, it's the most corrupt administration and dangerous police force in history. You know, we have nationwide publicity, the latest was USA Today, I guess Mayor Brown had that, wasn't he? New York Times, USA Today, you know, the editorial in the Berry Journal today, they asked Chief Eaton for telling the truth, and they blamed Eaton. They didn't even mention Perry or, or Berry for writing that union agreement that limits transparency and accountability. The problem is not with the rank-and-file cops, most of them are great people. The problem is the corrupt leadership, and you've been enablers to that. You should have gone to Las Vegas, you understand? I, well, I'm part of this, I'm part of the legislative body of this city. I should be there. You're not even interested in knowing what the P O J wants. You're not doing your job. You're advocating your role, a lot of you folks are good people, but you have a responsibility to us. You know, I'm here to see today an eighteen-twenty-nine Principles of Law Enforcement. Is that the best you can do? What you ought to do is start demanding, why aren't there recorders? Why aren't we holding cops accountable? They'll pass the Principles of Law Enforcement by some character in eighteen-twenty-nine. That's a joke. That's a joke.
Thank you. Next speaker, Melissa Tapi Garcia, Dick Fisher, Ken Obinski, Anthony Vargas.
Hi, um, my name is Melissa Tapi Garcia, and I'm a local member of sixty-four, and a union steward. First, I'd like to thank you...
Thank you, city councilors. Let's see, if this is a, do you mail that? When I was here a couple of weeks ago, I was, they used the word whistleblower. This is the original document here, when I first started recognizing some abnormal transactions over there at the golf course, and all the golf courses, but in this one in particular, this is when this situation started here. On six-five, I was assaulted battery, I had to get the police department out there, and the city, and Barbara Baca, and the people in the fireworks department failed to protect me. So therefore, Mr. Zimmerman comes at me again, with another one, I have that other fish port. Here in January, they failed to protect me, Mr. Yarmol, everybody in H R knew about it. I had already filed for whistleblower protection. Here's the whistleblower stuff that I filed. Here's the one from the state of New Mexico, they certified. And this is not a personnel matter, this is an issue that I turned in stuff of negligence, malfeasance, wasteful spending, fraud, and everything included. This was also, the inspector general said here, um, wanted to let you know, everybody here, Mr. Yarmol, that on March twenty-fourth, Carlos Navarro was granted whistleblower protection under Article seven of the whistleblower policy. The office of the inspector general wants employees to go free from coming forward, knowing that they are free from protection and retaliation. None of this stuff has happened. Now the city, Rob Perry placed me on leave with pay. Once I turned in this audit, I was placed on leave without pay, now affecting my family. However, I'd like to say, the other day, I came forth, and I did give the city council, you guys, I'm not gonna say the dollar amount in here, and within forty-eight hours, the union workers did get a three percent increase, that was my documents that I turned in. So I'd like to think that what I did was the right thing, again, they may feel otherwise, but I know that I had to protect the people, I turned in what I had to, and I still stand behind and ask for you guys, the city councilors, to say, "Look, Carlos did the right thing, he was protected. We need to err on the side of being cautious. I don't want a lawsuit. I want me to go back to work, please. I need to take my house and my family." Thank you. Counsel Fares, I think there's a question for you.
Actually, it's not a question at all. I would like to set an objection, that this kind of thinking said, because since there's a lot of personnel dispute, the administration can't respond, so people were, in the audience or watching TV, might think there's no response, but I suspect there is, and it's, well, not a question, sir. So, um, I would just, in the future, I think we shouldn't hear open personnel dispute, so we shouldn't hear just one side, because the administration can't respond to this side.
I'd like to get a, I'd like an opinion from our legal team. Mr. Blenders. This is general public comment.
Mr. President, Councilors, uh, it's, it's, well, a couple of things I want to come first. Um, I think it's certainly the Baron Matthews of the, the council can do, that's our party at, at the once today, but the council can't involve itself in personnel matters. Um, I, I think, again, in a manner in which the city government, the general public comment, the, I think the council's discretion is, is to work, whether you want to administer, if you want to exercise some policies and for not any of it. Um, I think it is true that Mr. Media has avenues available, he's talking about, it sounds like he's filed with the appropriate enemies if he wants to challenge, uh, whatever personnel actually is dealing with. Um, and I, I, yes, I don't know if the administration is, is inclined to, to comment on it, but I would not blame them if they didn't, isn't involved in that personal relationship at all.
Counsel Burden.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Blenders. Uh, I guess I would add to that question. I don't think that people that speak to us during public comment are asking us to weigh in, resolve any personnel issue. I think what it was is a complaint of something that they felt was unjust, and I think this is a perfect venue to do that. Now, if they were to ask us to pass legislation to help them, I can see how that would be out of line, but, or, I think once you come to us and say, you know, "This has happened, I feel it's unjust, and I feel like something should be done," you know, uh, the administration, the mayor, doesn't have to respond to that, but to charge it as if it were only a personnel issue, and people are speaking out of turn, I don't think is correct. I think it's a comment, and it's a public comment.
Counsel Fares.
Just to be clear, I don't think there's anything improper with the president or the city council listening to somebody talking about their issues, but I think it's a policy matter, and I don't think we should, because if someone came up here to say that they're wrongfully terminated, when in fact they're rightfully terminated, um, the administration can't say they're rightfully terminated and explain why. So we have these publicized, um, meetings, we have them on TV, and there may very well be good reasons why this particular employee was terminated, but Mr. Perry would be opening the city up a lot of ways if he talked about it. So for that reason, I think that we just shouldn't hear them at all. That would be my preference, is just my point, and, um, and, and also, I just want, for everyone who's watching TV, to say there might be reasons, there might be responses to this, Joe, but we can't talk about it.
Again, I think that he still does have the right, under general public comment, to state his position, and that's exactly what we did. Also, I'm not terminated, I still work for the city, I'm on place on leave up to a year without pay, and I promise for effect. Thank you.
Before we proceed, I have, uh, one question for our legal staff, and this looks like this was a district court decision, and it states under paragraph nine, as an essential matter, we are not persuaded that the absence of never-break provision in the L M R O fundamentally violates the P B U. The L M R O does not permit the city to unilaterally, unilaterally impose conditions of employment until the C D A has expired. Instead, the L M R O includes provisions for the impasse resolution, remediation, and voluntary binding arbitration. These provisions ensure that the unions are participants in the termination of employment conditions, even after a C D A has expired. Anyone elaborate on that, Mr. Blenders?
Um, Mr. President, Councilors, Mr. President, Councilors, um, I don't really have much at it, the case that you're reading from, um, is a recent court appeals decision dealing with the court's interpretation of the labor management relations ordinance, um, and I think the paragraphe speaks for itself.
So basically, when the mayor made that decision, he probably should have worked with the unions in trying to move this arbitration, that's exactly what the unions are asking for, is that correct?
Mr. President, Counsel Sanchez, um, the, the paragraph does say that, uh, you know, L M R O, uh, limited decisions cannot be made, that's the court's decision, um, and it's talking about arbitration and provisions of the L M R O that we discussed earlier.
And this decision was handed down by the court appeals, correct?
Mr. President, that's correct.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President Jones.
Thank you. I see Mr. Perry is saying, well, he would like probably...
Yeah, I have practiced law a little bit too, about twenty-seven years, and I agree with Mr. Martin, as that speaks for itself. However, my interpretation of it is basically that the appeals court looked at the, the structure of the labor management relations ordinance, and they said, "It might not be the same as P B U, but it does provide the rights to participate in the process." And to that extent, the city can't unilaterally impose, and I agree that we can't unilaterally impose, until we go through our imposition procedures, as we did, which of course is a good faith obligation, part one. Number two, mediation, and thirdly, arbitra, uh, voluntary arbitration. And we exhausted those procedures. That's as far as our L M R O takes you, is, is that's what it says, it doesn't have anything after that. And so clearly, I think we complied with, and I was very mindful of this opinion, and I think we complied with it, under state P B U, and, and remember too, under state P B U, that you're restricted to the, uh, the appropriation, and of course, this is a one-year appropriation of three percent. Oddly enough, under our procedures, it's basically total package, and so, just as Mr. Gutierrez said, and I agree, like, with ninety-nine percent of what Mr. Gutierrez said, as far as his analysis goes, as far as one side wins or the other side wins, you know, chips wall where they may, yeah, but in this case, what you're talking about is their last best offer. That last best offer had a raise from F Y two thousand fourteen, meaning last year, the F Y... as far as one side wins or the other side wins, you know, chips walloped they may. Yeah, but in this case, what you're talking about is their last best offer. That last best offer had a raise from FY two thousand fourteen, meaning last year, the FY two thousand fifteen, meaning the current fiscal year, and the FY two thousand sixteen, meaning the, the year. So the cost of this salary increase, just a three percent interval, was two-point-seven million. It gets right back down to what I was talking about, is that if you let an arbitrator make that decision about accepting the total package, then he's, he's basically replacing you as the, as the appropriators. And saying, "No, you're on the hook for two-point-seven million times three." So we could have exposure in this situation up to close to nine million dollars if we went with that, that recommendation about just let the arbitrator decide. I just think that's something to be really mindful of. And, and, and I just want to add, in closing, I'm, I'm really glad that we're able to get the three percent into the hands of twenty-one hundred employees. Because that is two-point-seven million dollars. It's for a group of folks that haven't had a raise for a long time. And I see people having different thoughts and all that. But when, when you have a proposal, and that proposal requires that in order to give somebody a raise, you've got, the city would have had to agree to a three-year deal with exposure up to nine million dollars roughly. Number two, give up the evergreen provision that was won in litigation in court. Number three, give up the union time. And number four, agree to binding arbitration? I, I don't know how that's supposed to work as a quid pro quo. The whole concept of negotiation is you folks, as, as the chair, the board directors of this corporation, say, "Here's the appropriation to, to, to the CEO, and, and go take what you can." And you go to the employees and you say, "Okay, this is what we have. We'll give you this in exchange for, for, you know, something we want." Whether there are terms or conditions of employment, in this case, union time. And it was even worse to the extent of, "No, we don't want just union time. We want a three-year deal. We want the evergreen we lost." That's the union rights they speak of. And those are fundamental. They're not the rights. There's no constitution that requires the right. There's no, there's no specific state constitution requirement of law. As a matter of fact, they're not included right now. We know the court said we don't have that, as far as relates to evergreen under LMRO. And we know the court, basically, will come to you, asking for arbitration. We know they don't have that. So you use the term rights, that's certain, somewhat of a misnote. I feel good about what we did. I feel, these folks are very passionate. And, and, and I certainly appreciate their passion and, and recognize some very substantive issues. But continuing this stalemate posture of not accepting the three percent because some folks believe these fundamental union rights, that doesn't get us anywhere. And it doesn't distribute that two-point-seven. I guess the court will decide. And I wish we could have done it differently.
Mr. Members. So I guess, um, was the administration insane as the way they were able to justify this, that it wasn't a unilateral raise? So that's, that's kind of the justification, that's why they were able to do this. So what is this, leave us for next year?
Mr. President, Councilman. In what sense, as far as the, you know, the appropriation for?
Next year, when we do, when, Mr. President, sorry. Um, when we do the appropriation for, for next year, then, I mean, are we back to negotiations? I mean, what are they imposed?
Mr. President, Councilman, I'd like to defer, Mr. Sancho.
Mr. President, Councilman. Should the council appropriate additional funding for a raise next year? Two things. Um, the first is it will be in a new session of negotiations. So the, the new money that the council will appropriate will be subject to the random department. Second is at that point, uh, the council may have, should it choose, um, express its policy that they want whatever raise has been reserved to carry forward. Those are the entries for that and that. But next year will, will entail a new round of funding.
Mr. President. So, um, so then that would mean that they would have to negotiate based on what they were given now?
I'm not sure.
Because I, it's my understanding, Mr. Perry has said that they offered the, what they did when they imposed this, they did the last best. So just for clarity, I mean, where do they start off the negotiations next time?
They start off with your salary plus three percent.
So the last best wouldn't be a carryover that they start, Mr. President, I'm sorry, as a carryover?
Mr. President, uh, Councilman. I guess I agree with John to the cap, with the cap, the authent, it depends what the court would do. They could go to court and say, "You can't impose." Well, you can't impose everything, or, and you have to give the raise back? I mean, so we could be conceivably in court, basically saying, "That three percent that you gave twenty-one hundred employees, the basic, you know, two-point-seven million dollar appropriation, you can't impose at all." I mean, it is conceivable that that could happen. So, um, you know, you've got to make a decision. You can take the situation, uh, or, or you've got to give back the raise. If they give back the raise, then you have that situation that I think you're alluding to, where the appropriation from this year wasn't spent, uh, spent out. So what would happen next year? And you, I think, from a legislative matter, if you do this up to Mr. Zaman, would have an opportunity, an opportunity to reserve it and then reappropriate it. I'm sorry, thanks.
Before we go into announcements, let me make just a couple of comments regarding your statement about passion. Depending on these employees, it's an issue of passion. It's an issue of survival. And when you've got employees that have been here for fourteen years, making twelve fifty-one or twelve fifty-two an hour, I think it's embarrassing. I'm embarrassed to stand up here and talk about our employees making that, those kind of wages. You know, I need to see this court of court, I want you to get this resolved, and the employees to get the raises. But they, they are long overdue. I mean, we've taken two-point-three percent away. Uh, they're now, you know, they're now looking at that three percent increase. Some of the unions have negotiated contracts. But we've got to make sure those employees that have not been able to negotiate a contract and try to come to some resolution. Going to court is going to cost the city of Albuquerque, I believe, more than union time. And I think it's a point of philosophical difference between some of the members up here and the administration. But we should try to come to a resolution and get these issues resolved.
Sure.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also appear that if the unions were to be successful, and obviously they think they will be, that they would turn around and sue the state for, uh, legal expenditure. And if you're like, no, we play both ways. So I would caution us all to be careful.
Councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the fact remains is that there's still not a contract in place. And there does not appear to be any, um, uh, compelling reason for, um, for the administration to go back to the table and negotiate. So there's still a lot of language that is, um, up the air, uncertain. So the question is, where do we start next year? Um, really should be what, you know, you know, where are we starting from now? You know, the absence of a contract. The longer that goes, I think the more difficult it is for me to sort, sort this out. We still need a contract. And I, I, you know, during our guidelines meetings several times, we asked, and the administration agreed, "Yeah, we should go to arbitration. As long as we do it under PIBA, we'll, we'll go to arbitration." That never happened. That was months ago. I think we did several of those guidelines in negotiation meetings. So I, I just wanted that to, that thought to get the light of day that we still need a contract. We have labor, folks are labor unions. Um, we have work that needs to be done. There needs to be some definition in the form of labor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. We have made it to page number ten. Councilwoman? Councilman.